Can I please ask you to make your way to the nearest exit, either in front or to the side here, and assemble outside Waitrose where we can do a roll call and you can then safely leave. But as I say, we're not expecting a fire alarm this evening. And for anyone who's obviously going to be here for a long period of time, the lavatories are through the double doors and out by the lift to the right. So if we can start, I'd like to confirm that the minutes of the meeting held on the 1st of November have laid on the table for the appropriate half an hour before the meeting, and I will sign those at the end. Are we agreed, Executive?
Very good.
Thank you. We have apologies for absence.
Thank you, Leader. We have apologies from councillor Adams and from councillor Hall, who's running late.
Thank you. I understand councillor Hall is on a train on his way. I think all our thoughts at the moment are with councillor Adams, and as I say, he is in our thoughts, and I think we all wish him all the best from Lee today, and a speedy recovery. And obviously, I'll keep you updated, members. Thank you. Can I ask for any declarations of interest? We have some questions from members of the public. We have slightly changed our format, but I think that, given the significance of this evening, it would be helpful also for anyone watching on a webcast or listening in, would you like to actually read out your question, and then I'll take the answer? Yes? Okay. In that case, the first question I have is from Mr Alastair Denton-Miller and Mrs Betty Ames. I'm not sure which of you is... Oh, hello, Miss... Good evening, Mrs Ames.
Yes.
Would you like to read it out, Mrs Ames? Yes, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Sorry, thank you. Wasn't close enough. Right. Given there is a complaint regarding the council's due process in the Plougham Dunstable Park commercial application, WA 2015 0695, and that this complaint has been through the fraud process of Waverley's complaint procedure, culminating with the Vagabond woman, who reckonomied passing it to the local government ombudsman if Waverley's response to the complaint was considered to not have been correctly dealt with. And that this complaint is now with the local government ombudsman, AGO, Warford's 16010388, who have assigned an investigation team, as they have concluded that further consideration is required. Given that this ongoing complaint considers Waverley's failure to follow due process for matters related to Dunstable Park, including traffic and other matters, and the Surrey County Council highways object to further development at Dunstable Park on grounds of sustainability, can the executive explain how, considering WA 2015 2395, before the outcome of the Ombudsman's finding and also the examination in public of the local plan, is anything but premature?
Thank you, May.
Thank you, May.
Thank you very much, Mrs Ames. As acknowledged in the question that was submitted by Mr Denton-Miller and yourself earlier in the year, the council did indeed consider a complaint about the due process followed in approving the application WA 2015 0695 for the erection of six buildings at Dunstable Park. I can confirm that in July this year, the complaint was reviewed by our executive director, Paul Wenham, under the Level Three of the council's complaints procedure, and he concluded that the application had been dealt with in accordance with the council's normal procedures for determining planning applications, and that there'd been no errors in the process. The planning permission granted in respect of WA 2015 0695 was not the subject of a judicial review and remains a sound, valid and extant planning permission. In accordance with the Planning Act, the determination of planning applications by the Joint Planning Committee, including any decision to delay making a decision, must be taken in the light of the development plan and any other material considerations. The current process complaint regarding WA 2015 0695 is not considered to be a material consideration. Furthermore, the council considers that application WA 2015 2395 is a completely separate application to WA 2015 0695, and the fact that there is currently a process complaint relating to the earlier application has no bearing on the determination of application WA 2015 2395. This view is supported by National Planning Policy Guidance. Finally, the executive have no power to make decisions regarding planning applications; this is the role of the Joint Planning Committee. However, the council is aware that the complainants have now raised their concerns about the determination of application WA 2015 0965 with the local government ombudsman, and it is understood that the ombudsman's office has yet to decide whether the complaint requires further investigation. The council stands ready to respond if and when the ombudsman decides to make further inquiries regarding the matters raised by the complainants. Thank you very much. I have another question from Mr Chris Britton of the Power Campaign. Good evening, Mr Britton. Thank you.
Good evening, Leader, and members of the executive. You have before you a local plan that has attracted nearly 3,500 comments. Most of these challenge its soundness. You have feedback from last week's Overview and Scrutiny Committee, at which serious concerns were raised about the plan, and in particular, the housing target, which has been based upon an OAN figure, which has been challenged by 11 parish councils, numerous individuals, and an independent professional report. You have just been given sight of the response from the council's consultant, G L Hearn, which crucially concludes that, if repeating this work today, a different vigour is likely to emerge, particularly as we would have a different starting point. Now, at the ONS committee, the head of planning explained that there's a strong link between the local plan and the pending application for Dunstable Aerodrome, reinforcing the point made by many of the 5,000-plus residents that have objected that it would be premature to consider this application before completing the examination in public of the local plan. Furthermore, the council now has a duty to consider the heritage aspects of Dunstable Aerodrome originally raised by Historic England, and which are now the subject of a conservation area request for the site. And finally, concerns about the level and extent of infrastructure needed to support the plan have been expressed by a huge number of consultees, as well as members of the ONS committee themselves, yet these, along with virtually all other comments made on the plan, have been summarily dismissed by officers. You have noted that the infrastructure delivery schedule has been retabled for this meeting. You may not have noticed just how few pieces of additional information this contains, I've been through it, despite officers' continued assertion that this is a living document, constantly changing. Its gaps on detail and funding remain so huge, you could park an old jumbo jet in them. I therefore ask, is the executive content that the officer's summary of the key issues following consultation on the local plan is a proper, detailed, adequate and impartial reflection of local opinion, and that due process will be being followed if key planning applications such as Dunstable Aerodrome are determined in advance of the local plan being examined and adopted? Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Britton. Yes, I can confirm that the executive is satisfied that officers have given full consideration to the issues raised in the consultation, and their comments in response will help members in making the decision on whether to submit the plan for examination. Members had the opportunity at the Joint Overview and Scrutiny Committee last week, last Monday, to debate these matters and comments arising from the meeting, which will be considered by both the executive, in due course, and council later on this evening. With regard to the specific point that you've made concerning the Dunstable Aerodrome planning application, the executive is satisfied that due process would be followed if the Dunstable planning application is determined in advance of the local plan being examined and adopted. Thank you. I now have Mr Charles Orange, Plaskem Parish Council. Mr Orange?
Good evening. My question concerns the OAN, and the office's report on comments and responses to the local draft plan was considered at the meeting of the ONS committee on November 21st. The report includes the implied surprising and unpublished response of G L Hearn. Well, actually, you've now got that response for G L Hearn, because it was tabled for this meeting. And that said, despite having considered the report on the OAN by NMS S for the 11 joint parish councils, Hearn considers that SHMA remains a sound basis for planning. The NMS S report stated that if the 2012 base projections used in the SHMA is updated to be based on 2014 statistics, then the number of new homes required would reduce from 519 to around 400, and if updated for the latest mid-2015 statistics to around 372 PA. That's a big reduction. It seems very likely that during the EIP, the inspector will question the basis of the OAN and why the NMS S report has not been acted upon. And this is reinforced by the report that came in today, and which I've emailed you from NMS S, which concludes, in summary, it says that Hearn makes criticisms, but they don't disagree with one conclusion of the NMS S report, and that although they acknowledge that if they were to repeat their analysis, they'd arrived at a different figure, which could be nearly 25% lower, they don't suggest the work is updated. Why not? Even the Edge report, which you yourselves commissioned, suggested that it should be updated, looked at. So my question is, the executive are asked whether Waverley Borough Council have considered amending the SHMA and the required strategic sites to allow for the reduction from 519 per annum to around 400 per annum in the likely number of new homes needed in the plan period? And if this has been considered, why this course of action has been rejected? Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr Orange. In answer to your question, a number of representations, as you've said, on the local plan challenged aspects of the strategic housing market assessment, including the NMS S report, and as a result, the council's consultants, G L Hearn, undertook a review of these representations. The council is very concerned to ensure that its evidence on matters such as this, which is such a key part of the document, is robust, and that it will, in all likelihood, be one of the key areas, as I say, that is certainly challenged and examined in very great detail by the inspector. As a result of the review that was carried out, the executive is now satisfied that the G L Hearn work is robust and a sound basis for planning. In particular, it took account of the most up-to-date information available at the time using the 2012 base projections that were published in February 2015. Now, the Neil MacDonald review that was submitted to the council in September of this year had the opportunity to use the 2014 based projections that were published in July 2016. Although these 2014 based projections are the latest population projections that are available now, they were not available for the SHMA to use them, and when the council agreed to publish the local plan for consultation back in August of this year. The National Planning Practice Guidance clearly states that official projections are statistically robust and are based nationally consistently on consistent assumptions. So G L Hearn state that the rationale in the Neil MacDonald review for moving away from the official projections at the time of the SHMA is not clearly justified. If the council were to review the SHMA in the light of the latest projections, it would certainly result in a delay in submitting the local plan to its examination, and we need to remember that any figures could go at this stage up or down. So we do not feel that this would be the right assessment and the right way to actually assess the objectively assessed need for our housing within Waverley. Thank you. Colleagues, can we move on to the executive forward programme? Item five on your agenda, on pages 15 to 18, please. Any comments on the forward programme? Thank you. Are we agreed on the forward programme? Colleagues, I'll move to item six, which is the Budget Management Report. The report provides a review of the budget for the general fund, and that can be found on pages 19 to 28. And it also includes the housing revenue account against forecast to the 31st of March of 2017, based on the latest information from the housing team. So you will see that the report shows the financial position against budget, that we have the general fund against a £14 million budget, we're showing at present a £100,000 overspend. Development control and building control remain two key areas where income is still under a great deal of pressure, and we need to obviously keep a very close eye on that particular area. In environmental service, the green waste is performing really well for us, and supporting this, there's actually a request within the report that we make changes to the status of a temporary post within that department to a permanent post, to actually help us to manage that area of our council service. So I hope we'll have agreement on that when we move forward to the recommendations. In terms of our leisure centres, well, they're performing really well, and it's proposed that's £50,000 of the additional income from our leisure centres is actually put towards an options appraisal for the future leisure centre investment, which will generate further income for us. We've seen huge successes over the last few years with our leisure centres, both in terms of the services they provide, but also the income to this council, and it's absolutely crucial for us that we continue to reinvest and review the work we're doing with our leisure centre partners and the working within that area for us. In terms of general fund capital programme, well, that is broadly on track. The housing revenue account core capital programme has some rescheduling of the budget adjustment proposals, which really reflect the progress in delivering the programme. There is a request to reschedule Oxford Ridge funding to align the budget with the planned rollout of the refurbishment works. I think, Mrs King, you've been working very closely with councillor Hall on that, so I'm sort of taking from what I've heard that you're happy with that proposal. And there are, in all, 12 recommendations across the two pages, 27 and 28 of the report, and those recommendations can be found pages three and the last two on page four of your agenda. Any comments, colleagues? No? Can I take the recommendations as a block? Recommendations 1 to 12, are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item seven, which is the setting of council tax base and business rates for 2017/18, comes around so quickly, doesn't it? We've got the report, which you'll see is pages 29 to 33, and just really in summary, the council has a statutory duty to determine its council tax base and business rate estimate that's then used to set the council tax and business rates budget. It's a technical report, but indeed a very important report. The detailed calculations and assumptions that are used include some of the estimates that are subject to the outcomes of the business rates re-evaluation, and that's due in April of 2017, and therefore, a firm estimate in that respect is not yet given. There are therefore two recommendations under item seven on page four of your agenda and page 33 of the report. Any comments? Any questions? Those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. If we move on to the Housing Revenue Account Business Plan Review under item eight, councillor Mrs King, thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, Leader. I'll try and be brief, but this is a bit of a complicated subject, so I won't be as brief as all that. In 2015, the government budget instructed all social housing providers to reduce their rents by 1% per annum for four years, commencing in April 2016. As a result, the projected income will be reduced by 13.4 million over the four-year period, with a cumulative impact of 167 million loss over the remainder of the life of our 30-year business plan. Other proposals were introduced in the Housing and Planning Act, which will have a significant impact on the business plan, but details are still awaited by government. Don't expect we'll get much out of that until probably the White Paper in January. A member and officer group was formed to consider the challenges and develop a revised plan, and the detail of their work is recorded in the paper, so I won't go into that. The original business plan assumed a capital works budget of around £7 million per annum to improve the condition of our housing stock, to enable us to meet the council-enhanced decent home standard by 2015, which I'm pleased to say we did, and carry on and to maintain this standard for the future. The proposed reduction of £4 million per annum for external costs will enable us to protect the envelope of homes, to keep them safe and watertight, but internal works such as kitchen and bathroom replacement work may well be suspended to help balance the budgets and the contract may need to be buried or even terminated for the time being. There's been an increase in demand for responsive repairs, and you will see from your previous budget report, and this budget is expected to increase as a result of the lack of capital preventative works and valid ongoing increased tenant expectations. An additional £1 million per annum has been added to cover this. The original plan allocated half the surplus income for the first five years, decreasing to a third for the next four years, to the new affordable homes fund. This has worked really well, and is evidenced by the number of new homes we have managed to build in the borough. The group considered the way forward and agreed that those sites already under development or with planning permission should continue and be completed. The Stock Improvement Fund was merged with the New Homes Fund during the year to maximise the new homes. Rosson House was refurbished in Hazelmeir, and the regeneration of Oxford Ridge has now commenced. All future remodelling or regeneration work will be put on hold. In 2012, we were forced to take out £189 million of debt to pay the government to enable us to become self-financing in the housing department. This meant that Waverley reached the statutory debt cap of £192 million, as the HRA already has a £3 million debt. This actually, Leader, goes some way to answering a comment from the ONS committee, who were suggesting that we should actually be looking to go for more debt. The answer at the moment is, we can't. However, the finance team are reviewing the corporate debt management strategy, and it is proposed to stay within the current repayment schedule whilst the rent restriction remains. Other sources of housing-related funding are at risk. The proposed business plan will need to be reviewed as and when funding does change, but meanwhile, agreed the principles which should be applied to all HRA capital spending as shown in paragraph 36 on page 41. The full detail figures will obviously be presented to council in the main budget report, but the plan showed on page 43 gives the headline balances for the HRA for the next three years, and I'm sure colleagues will join with me in thanking all the officer team who've contributed significantly to produce the proposed plan. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor King. And yes, I think we all know how much hard work has gone on and gone into this behind the scenes, so officers... Thank you. Any comments or questions, colleagues? Councillor Mrs King?
My apologies, Leader. Paragraph 31, I should have mentioned, is no longer relevant, as the government have removed, I'm glad to say, removed the pay-to-stay initiative they'd proposed, it's no longer compulsory. Thank you.
Could I ask if we can please alter the report to remove that paragraph? Thank you. In the light of that, are there any other comments at all? No? We have, under that item, three recommendations moving across page four and five of your agenda. Are those agreed? Thank you. We now move on to item nine, which is the submission of part one of our Waverley Borough Council local plan. There is a very lengthy report, and, colleagues, you will have a number of other reports that have been circulated to you, including the updated feedback from the Joint Overview and Scrutiny Committee last week, the further update that was completed by officers earlier, which all members will receive a copy of, and that gives far more clarity in terms of a summary of the whole process through the committee process of our local plan, so that everyone's absolutely crystal clear about the timescale for the decision-making process. And what you'll also find on the back of that report are a table that clarifies for you exactly where we've picked up and the officers have made changes throughout the relevant chapters and versions of the report, because we've had a number, a significant number of versions and additions to that report, which is only to be expected, it's a living, breathing document. Clearly, we've a number of residents, which is great to see, who are very engaged in the whole process, right the way across our towns and parsha... the whole process, right the way across our towns and parishes, and another, a number of other respondents as well. So we've made sure that the various comments have been picked up, and you've all got that information. So for any members who are sitting at the back tonight, you will have a hard copy of that as well for the meeting later on this evening. There is no doubt that this evening is significant. We met and discussed the report at length back in July, and we agreed to move to the next stage and look for, and go out for feedback from all interested parties, and really look again at the soundness of our evidence base. We've had a huge number of responses, and whether or not the plan, shall I say, is to your liking, I would like to thank all the officers concerned for all their hard work. We've had some very long days and evenings, especially the last couple of days, so officers, thank you for all you've done. I know it's been quite challenging at times, but I think, and, you know, we could go on and on, but we have all worked hard. Officers have looked a great deal and taken a great deal of time on this. We've had a lot of input from the Planning Sig that was set up back in May, and I would like to thank members of the Planning Sig. We've got another meeting actually scheduled for next week, but I would like to thank all those members of the Planning Sig who, again, have contributed, have also been quite a critical friend at times. But I think, again, that's something that we've all needed, so that we've really had that check and balance. We're at a stage realistically now where we have to make a decision, and we have to make a decision this evening to move forward with this. We need to be brave. We will have criticism, and that's understandable, but we need to move forward, we need to make sure that the plan is submitted, and the plan is that if we gain agreement this evening, that will happen before Christmas, and we can then move on. We are hopefully then in control, and we can have a say, and we can map out the future for Waverley, for all our towns and parishes, because we have a number coming along now with their neighbourhood plans, which, again, is really exciting. We had the first hearing in Farnham on Friday for the Farnham neighbourhood plan, and, again, it's now time that we actually took control and we start to map our own destiny again. So, as I say, you have before you very lengthy reports, a number of updated versions answering a lot of the questions that were drawn out of the ONS last week. Can I ask, members, if you've got any questions or queries that you would like to raise? Thank you, executive. Councillor Dinas.
Thank you, Leader. I'm going to be brief, because I know we've got a long discussion that's going to occur at the second part of this evening, but I just wanted to make it clear, I will abstain from this vote, and at the appropriate time later on, I'll give my views. So when the vote's done, I just want it to be clear that I will abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think for the sake of transparency, both at the executive and at council later, I shall ask if we can take a recorded vote. Is that agreeable with everyone? I think residents may want to see that as well, so that's absolutely fine. Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Leader. Just a sort of a brief view of the local plan from my perspective. As probably every councillor's aware, I've been very critical of the length of time to get to this stage, and there has been a lot of soul-searching, and there have been a lot of difficult decisions. I understand where my colleague is coming from, and I can understand his reservations and those of his residents, and there are many, many residents who have concerns, but whatever happens, we have to have a local plan, and we've debated it, we've gone through it, we've changed it, we've updated it, and really, I think we've almost exhausted all the options, and I personally support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. Councillor King.
Thank you, Leader. I mean, what do you say about a tonne of paper? Waverley as a borough, as we know, is unusual in that it has four centres, main centres of population, which breed their own problems, because we're never all going to agree. The plan covers a huge variety of topics and subjects, some dear to some people's hearts, some not so dear. We could go on and on and on forever and never, ever get it all right. So I sort of echo some of the view expressed by councillor Edwards, and I think the time has now come when we just have to submit it and let the inspector get on and do his job. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bolton.
Thank you, Leader. Just to be brief, I recognise that there have been many concerns about the OAN, objectively assessed housing needs. Some developers would like more houses, some residents would like fewer. I believe we have a suitable balance. Thank you.
Councillor Bolton, thank you. Councillor Martin.
Thank you. I think it's worth first noting how long it has actually taken to get to this point. And I think it's worth, as the Leader has said, congratulating our officers to get here, but also, I think it's worth congratulating the Leader as well for getting this council to where it is, not to mention the portfolio holder in his absence. I know that there are some who are unhappy about it, but we do need to have a local plan in place, and there was considerable concern when the last local plan was withdrawn, when we would be left with little planning protection for our borough. I believe that it's imperative that we have a plan that this council can work to, that enables us to build more housing to support those who wish to live here. So often, I've encountered residents who on the doorstep say how difficult it is for children and grandchildren to live in the local area, and if we don't continue to build housing of all sizes and types, our children and their children will continue to be priced out and forced out of the local area. Although still very young, I would dearly love for my children to live as close to me as I live to my parents and in-laws, should they wish it. Much has been said about the SMA, and whether the housing numbers should be based on population projections from 2012 or 2014. If we keep looking at a constantly moving figure, we will never submit a plan. The data we have used is the data available at the time of submission for consultation. Revisiting that figure now would mean going back to consultation, and we will then be in a vicious circle, never actually getting to the point of examination. Ultimately, what we have before us is a local plan that is based on sound evidence, and I personally am comfortable with what is before us. The end decision will ultimately be made by a planning inspector, and I think that's absolutely key to this, and I will be supporting the officer's recommendations.
Councillor Dinas, you'd like to come back.
Again, I promise I will be brief, I'll probably get kicked under the table, but I just want to make it clear that this is not about we don't want housing, but it's about having housing where it's sustainable, you have the infrastructure, and it's at the right location. So it's not about not wanting housing, because like councillor Martin, I think we do need housing on the borough, but it's where it is. But I do have those concerns about sustainability, infrastructure, and, as has been mentioned tonight, the Neil McDonald Report and the response by G L Hearn. I hear what's been said, but that still doesn't take away my concerns. So please don't think it's no housing, it's where you put it, that it is sustainable, it has the infrastructure that will develop communities and not just dump thousands of houses in the wrong location. Thank you, Leader.
Councillor Hall.
Thank you, Leader. I mean, I hear what councillor Dinas said, but I do think that an imperfect plan well executed is infinitely superior than no plan at all, and I think the clock is ticking, and we need to move forward with it.
Thank you. I think you're absolutely right. Let's be clear, the clock is ticking. However, this plan is not one that is grasping at straws. We have made sure that whilst we are up against it, I think we also need to make clear, to your point, we certainly don't want government intervention, which is a possibility if we don't move forward with a plan, but we do feel that we have an evidence-based plan. Councillor Else.
Well, I agree with my colleagues who are going to support this. I will be supporting it as well, because I feel that it has been going on for far too long, and the infrastructure in our borough is not robust at the best of times. I don't know what we can do about that, and we do have to have a local plan, and I think the one we've got will be tried and tested by the inspector. We must leave it with him or her.
Thank you. One aspect, as I said earlier, is of the reports that I know a number of members have questioned, is the infrastructure delivery plan. And just to be clear on that, that will continue to be updated. A number of updates have been added to that today, as I've said, and that will continue to update, because clearly there are opportunities to increase the infrastructure and the funding coming forward, and we will see that continuing as development comes forward as well. Colleagues, any other comments?
In that case, we have two recommendations under that item. I would like to move that we have a slight, a small amendment to recommendation two. Mrs McQuillan, I think you can put that up on the screen if you would. So, recommendation two would actually read, if I just read it out, again, for the sake of clarity. Recommendation one remains as is on the agenda. Recommendation two is that the head of planning services, in consultation with the leader or planning portfolio holder, be authorised to make any necessary changes to the schedule of modifications arising from the updating of the supporting evidence base, including the water cycle study and the infrastructure delivery plan prior to submission. Colleagues, are you agreed with that word on that? Can I have a second?
Have a second.
Thank you. Colleagues, are you agreed on that wording?
Very agreed.
Thank you. Can I ask, are you agreed on both recommendations before you? Can I ask if we could now move to a recorded vote?
Can we take them separately, because they're a bit different? Can we do recommendation one, then recommendation two?
Can we move to recommendation one? Can I ask, can we move to a recorded vote, those in favour of recommendation one? Can I now ask for anyone against recommendation one? Thank you. Can we now move to recommendation two as revised? Can I ask for all those in agreement with recommendation two? Anyone against recommendation two? Anyone abstaining from recommendation two? Thank you. The vote is carried. Right. We'll now move on to item 10, which is the scope of the local plan, part two, and that looks at non-strategic sites and policies. You'll find the report in your agenda on pages 51 to 56. Clearly, what we're keen to do is make sure that we're working in parallel as far as possible, so officers have already started to scope out local plan and look to work on the scope for the local plan, part two, and the various aspects of the policies that will be needed for that, whilst we're also going to be completing part one and the submission. We are going and working to quite a challenging timescale for part two, as you will no doubt see from your report. But it's what we do feel, and I know I speak on behalf of the planning portfolio holder as well when I say this, is that we really do need to make sure that whilst completing everything in a timely fashion and making sure that, again, we've got a robust and evidence-based part two of our plan, we do need to move this forward, because, again, as I've said earlier, we need to be in the driving seat here, and there are many areas that come under part two that we need to make sure we're moving forward with as well. Colleagues, have you got any questions you'd like to raise on part two? Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Leader. Just a clarification, that's all, from a planning perspective, on page 55, where we talk about the historic environment, it says about listed buildings, scheduled monuments, et cetera, but there's nothing about listed settings. I mean, I know that's in the MPVF. I mean, does that include the setting? That's my only question.
Councillor Edwards, I can confirm that it does, and what we will do is we'll update this to actually include that as well. Okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions, members? Councillor Martin.
Well, I just want to say I fully support this. I think it's absolutely worth accelerating the programme. I think I'd like to see this concluded, and I think this is worth investing the money into the local plan, part two, so I wish it well.
Any other questions or comments, colleagues? In that case, are we agreed on the recommendation before you?
Agreed.
Moving on to item 11, this is an area of work that we're very keen as a council to support, and that's Waverley's Support Service and participation in the government's vulnerable person relocation scheme. You have a report before you on pages 57 to 62, should you wish to turn to those, and both, I'd like to thank councillor Mrs King for the work she's been doing on this, and Mr Roberts as well, and his team, because already a lot of work has started behind the scenes to start to move this forward. You will be aware, colleagues, that... You will be aware, colleagues, that we've got a very strong track record in supporting families with very complex needs through our family support services. And we've done a lot of work over the last few years since setting up that service. We are very keen to respond to the very sad plight of refugees, the Syrian refugees, very vulnerable people, very vulnerable families who are in desperate need of help. We've been keen also to ensure that, bearing in mind the fact that Waverley's a very rural borough, we have the right support network in place. That is absolutely crucial when helping, bringing families over to this country and helping to resettle them, and for them to actually integrate and take a valuable place in society. So for us, we want to make sure that we have the right structure in place, that we can actually help and support those people. The scheme itself, the Syrian Refugee Settlement Scheme, is actually fully funded by the government. And families will be housed in private rented accommodation within the borough. We're actually already in contact with some of the local faith groups to see if they have any suitable accommodation that can be rented for them. And we will continue to work with a number of the areas of the voluntary sector and differing faith groups as well in this. So it really is the community coming together to help the families. We're going to, over the next five years, take five families. And we, obviously, the first part of that is us actually recruiting a family support worker so that they can actually start to put in place the plans and give the families, as they come, the necessary support. councillor King, I don't know if you'd like to add to that at all?
How could I resist? It's one of my favourite subjects. Moving on from what you've said, which I totally support, I can't go leave it alone and not say that our family support team, although the smallest in the county, is the highest performing. They work with the most vulnerable families with complex needs, identifying and tackling the underlying reasons that led some of these poor families into crisis. The team works intensively with the family and is also key in coordinating the input of other relevant agencies around the family, such as social care, youth services, health, education, department of work and pensions, and the voluntary sector, which you've already mentioned. So this team is extremely well placed and very well equipped to become the lead role in supporting any refugees. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, colleagues? councillor Mrs Else.
Thank you. I understand this to be a five-year plan, programme, and one family per year. Have we decided on this number yet? Has that been decided?
The reason that we're suggesting one family a year, and we're looking at five across the five-year period, is that we're working with all the other Surrey districts and boroughs. And we've got, some of our colleagues are rural districts, such as we are. And what we do want to make sure is that, A, we can give the family who come here the right level of support. And we do have to realise that Waverley is, as I say, a very rural district. So we're trying, we're going to take the number, such as Tandridge are taking a similar number, because we feel that we can actually ensure that we give them the right level of support. But yes, five is the number that we are recommending before you this evening. You wanted to come back, Mrs Else?
Yes, please, Leader. Thank you. Just to say then that I notice there's a risk that we may not get any families. That's one thing for us to bear in mind at all times. That's one of the risks, that we may not get any and will be set up, geared up. But I see there is something in place to mitigate the effect of that. And the other thing is, of course, because they'll have five years refugee status, it's going to be a 10-year programme, isn't it? Because the last family to come in in five years' time will still have refugee status for their first five years. So it's a 10-year plan.
Mr Roberts, we'll give you a little bit more information on that aspect.
Thank you, chairman, and thank you councillor Else. The intention, the work of the family support team with these refugee families is to enable them to fully integrate into the community, where appropriate with adult members of the family to access employment opportunities, and to be as quickly as possible, fully independent, contributing members of the community. And therefore, there will not be an ongoing cost beyond the five-year programme.
councillor Edwards, you wanted to come back? Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Just from my own personal point of view, and a lot of my residents, they welcome this initiative, and they've spoken to me about it. And I've explained that I have great confidence in the family support team. As my learned colleague councillor King has stated, it's one of the highest performing in Surrey. And from my own experience, I completely agree with what she said. So I welcome this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Edwards. Any other comments? Right. councillor King, you want to?
Sorry, Leader. Leader, could I please propose an amendment to the recommendation two on page 61? I'm not sure whether you've actually got a copy of it or not. Go.
I have. The amendment reads, with officers authorised to incur grant-eligible expenditure as appropriate to implement this.
Correct. I'm happy to second it if you wish to propose it.
Okay. So in that case, can we just look to page six under the recommendations? Recommendation two. Have you all got that?
Yeah.
Yep. And can we, as I say, can we add at the end, where you've got and, and put, with officers authorised to incur grant-eligible expenditure as appropriate to implement this? I believe I have a second. Thank you councillor King. Are we agreed on this amendment?
Agreed.
Thank you. Can we move to the three recommendations before you under that item? Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Can we now move to item 12? councillor Mrs King, it's you again, housing service, water charges. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much indeed, Leader. Colleagues received a report in September this year highlighting a High Court ruling which found the London Borough of Southwark had overcharged some of its tenants for the Water and Sewage Collection Service on behalf of Thames Water at their unmeted properties. Waverley, along with many other districts and boroughs, has a longstanding contractual agreement with Thames Water to simplify billing procedures for tenants with unmeted water supply. External legal advice confirms that Waverley's arrangements with Thames Water is virtually identical to the Southwark model. There are 2,577 council tenants in Waverley currently paying a water charge to us under the Thames Water arrangement. The relevant period covers the last six years back to March 3, 2010. The potential value of claims is £400,000, which has been set aside from HRA funding to meet. This is based on the commission received about the £5, sorry, above the £5 admin charge per year allowed under the Water Resale Order 2006. All gets a bit technical then. To stop any ongoing liability relating to commission, it's proposed that we vary the agreement by a deed of variation with Thames Water with effect from the 1st of April 2017, which will have no impact whatsoever on our tenants. There are two options going forward. One is to maintain a varied contract with Thames Water or to give notice to terminate the contract with Thames Water. Thames Water now offer a range of flexible payment plans, which are indicated in paragraph 18, which they didn't do at the time that we set up the original arrangements with Thames Water. So it's quite difficult with people who are having trouble managing their cash flow. But these will make it much easier for them to move over to Thames Water billing and bring them in line with all the rest of the tenants across the borough. Under the Housing Act 1985, we are required to consult with our secure tenants if any changes are made in the way their homes are managed. The 2,577 tenants have already been notified of the case, our potential liability and the possible refund. It's proposed that consultation starts this December for six weeks to seek tenant views on the proposal to terminate the current contract. It's proposed that refunds are made through a credit to rent accounts after any outstanding debt or rent arrears to the council has been repaid. Tenants will then have the option of requesting any surplus paid to them under the normal refund process. The timetable is on page 68 of the report.
Thank you, Mrs King. Colleagues, any comments? No, I think the report lays it out very clearly. We just need to make sure that we follow due process and move this forward. Thank you. There are three recommendations under that item. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item 13, Waverley's off-street parking order. councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Leader. The purpose of the report is to request approval to commence a consultation process to amend Waverley's off-street parking order. This is a very straightforward consultation because we need to update it. There have been changes in the way the parking orders are issued. And if you look at the annex one on page 73, it quite clearly lists there the reasons why we need to go out to consultation, why the changes are needed, and it is fairly straightforward, I believe. If my colleagues have got any questions, please ask. Thank you.
Colleagues? You asked for questions. Any questions or any comments? In that case, we've got one recommendation. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. councillor Edwards again, school parking permits.
Thank you, Leader. Right. The purpose of this report is to seek approval for revised proposals for the administration of school parking permits. Just as a, for information purposes, in the last budget round, we decided that we were going to withdraw these and start charging only a nominal amount for the issue of these parking permits. However, on review and talking to fellow colleagues and fellow councillors, they made representations which we, in the executive, listened to. And I visited all the schools concerned, spoke to all the heads and the responsible administration staff, and negotiated with them quite a large reduction in the permits issued. And although it has a slight effect on the budget proposals for this year, I'd like to recommend that we adopt the new parking permit proposals. And it is something that the council can do for the benefit of some of the very vulnerable people, particularly the children who attend those schools, because it is quite dangerous. And I don't know if any of you have been to a pick-up or a drop-off. And it is absolute chaos. And if we withdraw these permits, it's only going to make matters 10 times worse for those schools affected. So that is why we are proposing the reintroduction of the new proposals for school permits. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Edwards. And I know you've worked very hard, including a number of visits to schools, so thank you for that. councillor Martin.
Thank you. Firstly, I'd like to congratulate the portfolio holder for having the courage to face those affected by this directly. I mean, that really is excellent. I think what we have here is a really good compromise reached that shows that this council really does listen to its residents and can deal with the issues faced by residents directly. I do know firsthand what school pick-up time is like, having recently started doing it myself.
Colleagues, any other comments? In that case, we have one recommendation before us on the item 14. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item 15, which is the update to the scheme of delegation for neighbourhood planning. There's a report on that running from pages 79 to 82. And it's basically seeking approval for changes to the scheme of delegation around neighbourhood planning, which we hope will add both clarity and achieve the optimum level of efficiency in terms of this whole process. Now, you'll see on pages 80 and 81 that the proposed changes are actually detailed for you, so that you've got those very clearly clarified. And basically, the majority of those changes involve the delegation to the head of planning in consultation with the portfolio holder, and in some cases, the borough solicitor as well. But the whole rationale is that we ensure that this becomes a much more efficient process. As I said earlier, we've got a number of towns and parishes who are coming forward with neighbourhood plans, and we need to ensure that the process really is fit for purpose moving forward. So we've got one recommendation under that item, but any queries or comments at all? In that case, is that item agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item 16, which seems to be turning into a standing item on our agenda, the disposal of land at the Bourne Recreation Ground and the proposed community asset transfer. councillor Martin, can I ask you to update us on that, please? Thank you.
Well, I was going to say much the same thing, that this does seem to have become a standing item on the agenda. I think we're very near to the end of this saga. We've been through, we've jumped through numerous hoops to essentially get this moved on. I think what's in the report explains everything quite clearly. But I mean, essentially, this is a really good news story for the Bourne, to enable the cricket club to get what they need for their use. I commend it to the council.
councillor Martin, thank you. Would either of the solicitors like to speak to the item at all? Is there anything else in addition we should be aware of or need to be updated on? Thank you.
Just to say, we've passed round the one written objection that was received, and we've responded to that, but that shouldn't be any reason, I don't think, to proceed as per the recommendations. Thank you.
Very much. Mr Clark, I can see you gesturing you'd like to add to that.
Chairman, just a very brief update. We actually met with the board of the community organisation that is bringing this project forward this afternoon, and they're pleased with the progress, and we're working closely with them.
Thank you. That's really good news. It does seem to have taken a while, but we're finally really, there's light at the end of the tunnel. And having sat on a planning committee and seen the exciting plans, it really is good news to see that this is sort of all coming to fruition.
Right. In that case, any other comments from members? Or can I move to the recommendations? Right, in that case, any other comments from members, or can I move to the recommendations? Fine, so we've got five recommendations on page eight. Are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. We move to item seventeen, which is making best use of the Better Care Fund. Councillor Mrs King, would you like to introduce that?
Thank you very much indeed, Leader. The Better Care Fund is a programme spanning both the NHS and local government. Its function is to improve the lives of some of the most vulnerable people in our society, placing them at the centre of their care and support, and providing them with a wraparound fully integrated health and social care package, resulting in an improved experience and better quality of life. We saw a considerable increase in the Better Care Fund allocation this year. Makes a change, doesn't it, when you suddenly get, something's gone up, from three hundred and twenty-three thousand to five hundred and eighty-five thousand, which is quite significant for spending on disabled facilities grants and other measures to reduce demand on social care and health services. The provision of disabled facilities grants remains a mandatory function of the local housing authority. We've been looking at the best way we can speed up the disabled adaptation works, because they've been very slow and cumbersome to meet needs of people. For instance, elderly people coming out of hospital, so that they can stay in their own homes and to achieve more flexibility in the process. The recommendations make changes to the scheme of delegation to ensure a better response to need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs King. Colleagues, any comments before we... Councillor Else.
I would just like to say, I heartily welcome any initiative whatsoever which results in a rounded, holistic operation for our vulnerable residents. So I applaud this initiative, and I think I will fully support it.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other comments? Can I move to the recommendations before you? There are three recommendations under that item. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item eighteen, which is the review of polling places. Now, in the lead-up to the Police and Crime Commissioner elections and the earlier referendum vote of this year, a number of representations were received by Waverley about the use of certain polling stations, and especially where schools were involved. And I think we all recognise that it can make the situation quite difficult for the teaching staff and for the parents, and quite often results in the actual closure of the school for a day. A result of a review of a number of districts and polling stations concerned has led to the recommendation which is before you this evening. And we've got six recommendations. So I'll just run through them briefly, because there's a slight change to one. So recommendation one is the use of Buzzbridge Church Brighton Road, Godleming as a polling place instead of Buzzbridge Junior School. Item two is the agreement to use St Alburns Church Community Hall in Tilford Road, Hindhead, instead of Beacon Hill Primary School. Item three, just to be absolutely clear here, the common room at Gorselands on Alma Lane in Farnham remains a designated polling place for the Hale and Heath End Ward, with the other being the Bethel Baptist Church in the Hale and Heath End Ward. Item four, our recommendation four is the use of Cranly Leisure Centre in Cranly as the polling place instead of the Cranly Arts Centre. Item five, the agreement of the Wilfrid Neuss Youth and Community Centre in Godleming instead of the courtroom of Borough Hall. And then moving to item six, the Chichester Hall will remain the designated polling place for Whitley and Hambledon Ward. In that case, colleagues, have you any comments to make, or can I take those six recommendations with the slight amendment to recommendation three as agreed? Councillor Else.
Could I just have some clarity as to how the Cranly Leisure Centre is going to be affected by this, please?
Leader, very positively, because we obviously have been in communication with the leisure centre staff, they're keen to have the venue extra thoughtful, and they will receive an income for the letting of the room as well. All right. Leader, very positively, the leisure centre have been in communication with the elections team, they will have the use as a room for elections purposes, they will receive an income, so everyone's a winner, it's a good venue, good access for car parking as well. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying, Mr Wenham. Any other questions, or can we take those six recommendations as agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item nineteen is the designation of the taxi rank in Bridge Street in Godleming. There's a report running on pages one hundred and fifteen to one hundred and eighteen, and there's one recommendation with that. Colleagues, any comments, or can we...
Sorry, Leader. Yes, I just thought I'd report as a member of the licensing committee, the licensed, who met last week and thoroughly endorsed this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mrs King. In that case, can we take the recommendation before you under item nineteen? Thank you. Moving to item twenty, the joint enforcement initiative, councillor Dinas and councillor Edwards. I don't know who would like to start introducing that.
I'll do that, Leader, thank you. That's the Joint Enforcement Team, known as JET, is an initiative to jointly work with Surrey Police to tackle low-level crime, antisocial behaviour, on-street parking management and environmental crime. It will improve information sharing, better identification of problems and more efficient use of resources. It will reduce environmental offending such as fly-tipping, litter and graffiti. We will be able to provide a better service to our communities and have a coordinated action for tackling persistent problems. An application has been made to the Police and Crime Commissioner Community Safety Fund for finances. These are for set-up costs. These include uniforms, radios with GPS, marketing, communication, laptops, vehicles and stationery. On the fourteenth of November, the JET was discussed as an agenda item for the community ONS. They raised the concern that Waverley would be picking up police responsibilities. That's not the case. This approach gives greater visibility, provides the council with the ability to use their enforcement powers that are available. The recommendations, one recommendation which is on page ten of your agenda and page one hundred and twenty-four of your papers. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you, councillor Dinas. I personally think it's a really great idea. I think it's something that a lot of our residents are going to want to see, they want to see more visibility. And again, it's an important service that we're looking to provide as well. Colleagues, any other comments? Right, we'll move to the recommendation, there's one recommendation under item twenty. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. We'll move to item twenty-one, which is the Oxford Ridge Refurbishment Programme, phases one to three. Councillor Mrs King, are you covering this?
Yes, briefly. This is a bit of a broken record, I think, I keep coming back with these things. I'd like to ask the executive, please, for approval to appoint the preferred refurbishment contractor for phase one, two and three, Oxford Ridge, following the successful completion of the tender process, in accordance with the council's contractual procurement rules. And also to approve the appointment of a preferred building for the refurbishment project, et cetera. Yeah, it's all there in the recommendations.
Thank you. Under item twenty-one, we've got four recommendations. Colleagues, are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item twenty-two is the affordable homes at site D of Oxford Ridge, Godleming. Again, councillor Mrs King, do you want to speak to that?
Thank you very much. This is looking for approval for site D at Oxford Ridge, to appoint the preferred bidding contractor following successful completion of the tender process in accordance with the council's contractual procedure rules. And the rest is all the same. Thank you.
Councillor Bolton.
Thank you, Leader, as brief as possible. As the local councillor, I thoroughly support the work. I do have a slight concern. We seem to take overlong in following procedures to approve each stage, and I suspect my colleague, councillor King, agrees with me. Surely with an appropriate scheme of delegation, we can expect officers, as councillor Edwards would say, to get on with it!
So if I may, Leader, I couldn't agree with councillor Bolton more. We do really need to look at the scheme of delegation here. When you've got a project that's budgeted, already gone through planning, it follows the procurement rules, does everything else, it just seems crazy to have to keep coming back here every time now, asking for permission. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we all understand your frustrations. And hopefully, colleagues, we're going to agree to the recommendations so that we can start to move this particular phase forward. You've got three recommendations before you, are those agreed? Thank you. The next item is the performance management report for quarter two, which is July to September of this year. And the report itself, which is pages one hundred and thirty-nine to one hundred and sixty-two, so quite a detailed and lengthy report, gives an analysis of the council's performance for the second quarter. Now, services have performed well overall, with only four performances actually out of a total of thirty-six of the indicators being outside the target by more than five percent. However, there is always room to do better. So we've got our target, we've got our work cut out. I would like to just take this opportunity to actually thank the overview and scrutiny committee for their consideration of that report and their comments. Colleagues, there are two recommendations before you under item twenty-three. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Moving to item twenty-four, councillor Hall, the outstanding debts write-off for decision.
Thank you, Leader. This report is to approve the write-offs of six business rate debts and one sundry debt as detailed in the exempt annex to the report. The council vigorously pursues all debts and only writes off debts as a very last resort. The proposed write-offs are all due to the debtor becoming insolvent. There is one recommendation on page one six four.
Colleagues, any comments, or is that agreed? Thank you. We'll move to item twenty-five, which is the property matter at Holloway Hill. I believe councillor Martin, you would like to declare a interest in this matter.
Yes, apologies for not declaring this interest. Can I declare a non-perpetual interest on this item, as I am a director of the Holloway Hill Sports Association? As such, I consider this to have sufficient weight so as to undermine my ability to make an open-minded, objective decision, and I will therefore withdraw from the chamber during the discussion of this item.
Thank you. Right, so let's move to item twenty-five. Councillor Dinas, would you like to introduce the item?
Thank you, Leader. Holloway Hill Sports Pavilion is a community-based organisation who manage the pavilion, rent the sports pitches, et cetera. The council have no responsibility for the building, but take a small rent. They've been approached by the Rosie and Bean Cafe, who want to use the facility during the day. This will provide financial support to Holloway Hill and provide resilience and future security to the premises. The proposal is for a six-month trial, and if successful, a discussion will need to take place regarding a variance of the lease. This is an excellent idea, which is one recommendation, as indicated on page one hundred and sixty-nine and page twelve of your agenda. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you. I think the more that we can do to ensure that, you know, buildings and sports clubs that aren't utilised during the day do sort of start to earn their keep, and remember that this isn't a Waverley building, the better, because we need to do all we can to make sure our clubs are sustainable as far as possible. Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Leader. I think it'd be a great idea for this to go ahead, however, so long as we don't get ourselves into a legal tangle here, and, you know, and I wouldn't like to set a precedent and then something goes wrong and it comes back on us, so long as everything's tied up, I'm quite, I'm very happy for them to do it, but I want some comfort here. Thanks.
I think councillor Dinas might like to come back, and I can see that we've got the solicitors in as well, so I'm sure they'll reassure you. But councillor Dinas, do you want to just answer that?
Yes, thank you, Leader. That's the purpose of a six-month trial. We are legally entitled to do the trial, that's fine. That six months will hopefully highlight if there are any issues, but there'll have to be a variance of the lease to make sure it's legal after that period. But that's the purpose of the trial, to see whether it works and how it benefits the community, so I'm quite comfortable with that.
Thank you very much, councillor Dinas. Councillor Mrs King.
Thank you very much. And on top of councillor Dinas's comments, I also would like to see at the end of that six-month period, a decision about whether they continue to receive it free of charge, use of the building free of charge, or they should be paying at least a nominal rent for it. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. There's one recommendation, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Can we move, could someone ask councillor Martin to come back in, please? Thank you. Thank you, Mr Allen. Can we move to executive directors' actions? Mr Wenham?
Two items under this category this month, Leader, both relating to security. The first relates to works to secure the Marlborough Head following ownership passing to the council on the first of December, and the second to secure the Redgrave Theatre, unfortunately following continued vandalism, Leader.
Thank you, Mr Wenham. Again, unfortunately, we're having to come back for some more funding to make sure that we secure the Redgrave Theatre and, or the site that that building's on. I think we've seen a lot of antisocial behaviour and crime and disorder there recently, and we need to ensure that we really do keep a very close eye on it, especially with winter coming. The Marlborough Head, we again need to make sure that that site is absolutely secure with that passing into the ownership of Waverley later this week. So I'm afraid, colleagues, that the two items that are coming before you for the fourteen thousand pounds for the Marlborough Head and an additional five thousand for the building that was the Redgrave Theatre are needed to come from, certainly from the emergency capital fund, so that both buildings are secure. And let's hope that we can soon move forward with the regeneration of that area and not continue to spend our council taxpayers' money, which I think could be put to better use. Can I move to item twenty-seven? We have the exclusion of the press and public, we have one property matter to be considered. Colleagues, do we need to go into exempt on that property matter, or would you be comfortable not to?